So, alright, well, so as I stated before with Mounts, and I've got Osborne here, as we walk through this. So, Mounts took much more of the idealistic or the spiritual interpretation of the millennium. Okay, so we are coming back here to verse, let's see, four and five. And then, in case you forgot what it says, I'll read it, because it's been a couple weeks. "Then I saw thrones, and they sat on them, and judgment was given to them, and I saw the souls of those who had been beheaded because of their testimony of Jesus, and because of the word of God, and those who had not worshiped the beast or His image, and had not received the mark on their forehead and on their hand. And they came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years. The rest of the dead did not come to life until the thousand years were completed." This is the first resurrection. So, here is Mounts' take on the thousand years. There is another response, however, that is more specific and grows out of the text itself. Okay, Mounts. "Noting that the millennial reign with Christ should be limited to martyrs who gave their lives rather than submit to the blasphemous demands of emperor worship, it understands the thousand-year reign as a special reward to the martyrs of chapter six. These were told to wait under the altar until their number would be complete, and then their blood would be avenged upon those who dwell on the earth. The millennium is not, for John, the messianic age foretold by the prophets of the Old Testament, but a special reward for those who have paid with their lives the price of faithful opposition to the idolatrous claims of Antichrist." This leads to a further question. Are we to think of this millennial reign as an actual period of political and social history that is to follow the return of Christ? One very plausible argument is that when we distinguish the essential truth of prophecy from the form in which it is communicated, this being determined by the historical circumstances and dominant religious conceptions of the day, we will cease to find in Revelation 20 the prediction of an eschatological era. The essential truth of the passage is that the martyrs' steadfastness will win for them the highest life in union with God and Christ. So, instead of a millennial reign, what he feels being communicated here is that there will be this period of union of the martyrs with Christ. So, no longer under the altar, but with Jesus. It is a commentary on the Lord saying in Matthew, chapter 10, verse 39, "Whoever loses his life for my sake will find it." This does not mean that the author composed an allegory to communicate to his readers certain abstract truths. He worked within the necessary limitations of his own historical perspective and wrote for his own day. His understanding reflects the immediacy of the culture in which he lived and worked. So, the whole idea, remember, as we're talking about Revelation, what John, what John feels that God was communicating to him was not a plan for the end times, but was encouragement for the church to endure suffering, to become martyrs, if that's what was called, to suffer loss, whether it be a loss of family, a loss of job, loss of friends, completely ostracized from the community, but to know that in the end, God will make everything right and new. That in the end, we will all be with Him in His kingdom. So, that's kind of the spiritual aspect of this. That for these martyrs, for the ones suffering the worst fate, for those in these seven churches that are awaiting their fate, to know that they had that privilege of being under the altar for God hearing their call, and that He is bringing judgment on the earth, and that they will be with Him forever. So, obviously, he would see the thousand years as just a long and extended period of time, and really, not necessarily even something to be addressed specifically, but that these martyrs would have a special place in the kingdom to come. Not the messianic kingdom for the thousand years, but when a new heaven and new earth are created or recreated. Any questions on that one? So, if you are looking at the sheet that had, not the one I passed out tonight, but the one previously, that would be the top one, the idealism or spiritual. So, as you can see there, you know, you have the cross, history, boom, second coming, judgment, and then right into eternity. So, that's an illustration of what Mounts is communicating here. It's different, that's right, that's right. Yeah, and you know, and that's, you know, that's why I like, I like the whole idealism spiritual. He's just kind of spiritualized it, and moving on. It's a different perspective. I personally don't agree with that. You know, and there's many others that, that don't as well, so. Yeah, anybody else, any other thoughts? So, but you know, I, like, that's, that's the whole idea of this class, this, this, you know, as we're moving through, I want you guys to know the different perspectives, especially as we get to this point, right? And I think Mounts has done an amazing job contextually, bringing to life a lot of the main issues, even just within these notes. He was talking about emperor worship, right? And that refusal to take the mark and allegiance, and, and I was like, man, that, and Osborne does a great job of that too, Schnabel, like, you know, a lot of these others in academia are absolutely, because that's grounded in the context of John's experience. This is what members of those seven churches in Asia Minor were having to deal with. These were the choices that they had to make. So, and it's important for us to understand that, what that meant in their context, so that what would that look like today? So, yeah, I think it's important to, to really understand that times change, but you know, sometimes there's principles that don't, there's, you know, whereas back then, you had to burn incense, what would the equivalent of that be today? What does worship look like? So, yeah, I think it's important to be discerning. So, if no other questions on that, we are going to move on to verse five. Look at that, in the first half of this class too, man, alright. And so, at this point, what I'll probably be doing is going back and forth between Osborne and Mounts just for the next few verses, because it's, it's kind of interesting. Actually, so here, in verse four through six, what Osborne has to say, oh, my apologies, I lost my bookmark, so. Okay, well, we'll move on here. Okay, alright, so verse five, "The rest of the dead did not come to life until the thousand years were completed. This is the first resurrection." So, if you remember back a couple weeks, we read from 1 Corinthians 15 and all 59 verses, but you guys are troopers for hanging in there for that. And there was all kinds of problematic texts within that, so you know, so it was a lively discussion. But what Mounts has to say, "The rest of the dead who did not come to life until the close of the thousand years would be all the faithful except the martyrs, plus the entire body of unbelievers."
In this verse?
In this verse, yeah. So, yeah, so, verse five, "The rest of the dead did not come to life until the thousand years were completed. This is the first resurrection." So, if we were to interpret this from a pre-millennial perspective, is that these martyrs came back to life in a first resurrection to rule and reign with Jesus for a thousand years. That is typically what is interpreted as that. And then everybody else, and literally everybody else, not just Christians, but everybody else that has ever died will come back to life for judgment. And that's what we're actually leading into by verse 11. So, that is a pre-millennial perspective. So, those, verse six, "Blessed and holy is the one who has a part in the first resurrection. Over these the second death has no power, but they will be priests of God and of Christ, and will reign with Him for a thousand years." So, those who participate in the first resurrection are pronounced blessed and holy. The basis for their blessedness is threefold. They are not subject to the second death. They are not subject to the second death. They will be priests of God and Christ, and they will reign with Him for a thousand years. The second death is defined in chapter 20, verse 14, and chapter 21, verse 8, as being cast into the lake of fire. So, no mention of Gehenna, no mention of any place, just the lake of fire.
Can you go and read again?
Yeah, the threefold blessing is they're not subject to the second death. They will be priests of God and Christ, and they will reign with Him for a thousand years. I don't know about you, but that's a retirement plan right there. Especially if things are looking pretty bleak. But think about it practically. Like, we're reading this from total safety and security. Imagine if we were reading this under the cover of like night, like one or two in the morning, hiding in the back room of a shop, like reading over this, and we've all known plenty of people who have already been killed because of being a Christian. How encouraging would this be? Oh, man, look what they have to look forward to. And look what we have to look forward to if this happens to us. That's, I mean, that is really, I mean, keep that in view. Revelation is written for a church that is being persecuted and persecuted to the point of martyrdom. And in that way, Revelation is just, it's written as encouragement for them to stay focused. Not to, not to think that they're going to escape, like, that's not even in view here. What John is preparing them for, what God, through John, is preparing these churches is to give up their lives, to go to the, to stay faithful and persevere. All of a sudden, like, we just got done with a whole series on the seven letters to the churches? Like, we can see how that provides this groundwork, this foundation, for really the rest of the book. How cool would it have been if you put those letters at the end of the book? Imagine like reading through everything, and then you get to these letters, ooh, man. Actually, the next time you read through, like, start at, you know, chapter four, read through, and then jump back and read the letters. Okay, I'm going to do that, but like, but like, what a fun, that's the fun part of this, is like, I'm just up here talking, and I'm like, like, oh, oh, that's a fun idea. Like, let's do that, you know? Because like, you know, you're thinking of like all the little tidbits in those letters that are popping up throughout the rest of the book, right? Not just from chapter one echoing into two and three, but like the rest of the book. And it puts so much of what those churches were going through in perspective. Like, look at what I have in front of you. Don't compromise by listening to Jezebel or compromising with the Nicolaitans. Like, when there's the worship of the beast that is being demanded, don't eat the food that's sacrificed to idols. Look for these little compromises, root those out of your life, because there's big things coming where your life is going to be on the line. And you compromise in a million little ways, thinking that you're going to stand firm when that big decision is right there. You're fooling yourself. If you're only living for that big moment, then you are training yourself to fail. Because you've already failed a million times leading up to that. And so, there's a whole, there's a call throughout the book of Revelation is to persevere, to walk in holiness, to be discerning in the time in which you're living. And for those who give of their own lives, that this is what's promised to you. It's an eternity with the Lord. You even get a thousand-year jump on it. To be with Jesus Himself. I mean, does that sound awesome? I, I don't know about you, but like, I mean, just that being a part of my whole, my whole, like, eschatological, like, framework, my own theology, like, that's just a part of it. That if that opportunity ever happened, that I would know without a shadow of a doubt, if I gave up my life, if I refused to compromise, that this is what's in front of me. Well, actually, yes. So, in the first, like, in the 100s to 200s, there was actually a problem within the early church, because people were being antagonistic and were like provoking the officials into killing them. And so, like, the church had to like issue some of these statements where like, you know, and there's early church, you know, letters from some of the early church fathers that were like, that doesn't count.
Because maybe it goes beyond like, yeah. Be a good Christian, if you're past, then don't deny it.
Yeah.
And stand up for it.
Yeah.
And then, you know, going upside down.
Yeah, it, it's something that for like, you know, our faith, something that is so very important is just living in the spirit of, right? And like, the Holy Spirit, but just in the spirit of martyrdom, right? It's like, you don't go looking for it, but you know, if it's coming to your doorstep, you don't deny. Right? So, you're not like, it's just, that's contrary. And so, that's where, you know, some of the early writings were like, hey, you guys need to cut that out, like, that's, you can't just throw yourself, you know, on a spear when somebody, you know, the, the Roman, you know, centurion walking through the marketplace says, "How are you doing?" You can't throw yourself on their spear, that doesn't count. "I'm a Christian, nah." So, yeah. So, you know, like, yeah, so, so, so some were so inspired by it that they twisted those words and were going and seeking it out. So, yep. Now, let me also say, just as far of as the priority, like, look at what the reward is here for martyrdom. It's not those other things. It's Jesus. It's Jesus, that's it. Like, there's no other earthly peace to this that is supposed to be enticing. It's Jesus. Isn't that awesome? You know, you kind of take a little bit more of like an objective view, and you're just like, you know, if you were not a Christian, and if you didn't understand the power of the gospel, you'd be like, what, that's it? Like, what? You get to serve Him, that's, get to be His priest? That doesn't sound like fun. But for us, for Jesus, the focal point of everything we believe, it just hinges on Him and what He has accomplished in our redemption for us to give up our lives, our earthly lives, and all of our plans and hopes and dreams so as not to deny the truth. And what we get in return is to be with Him. It was the same time there, okay?
Saying be with Him, and this says reign with Him, what's the difference?
Yeah, so, that being with Him would be reigning with Him. The idea here, and once again, there's different interpretations of it as, if you were to take it as a pre-millennial understanding, and everybody knows what I'm talking about in that, right? So, we are currently before the millennium, and so there is a belief that there's a thousand years, whether it's an exact number or whatever, that as these martyrs come back to life, as the, you know, and this is where I would kind of point to two different options. Either as everybody has come together against Jesus at His return, and they're all wiped out, all of a sudden, you have these believers and everybody else that's left for the thousand years. And so, these martyrs who have come back to life will also be given responsibility to rule over those nations. The other view is that they would assist in the conquest of the earth in subjection to God. So, it's a little bit more hands-on and messy, but.
So, they could be murdered all over again?
Actually, that is never like communicated, not in the Old Testament or in the New, but it also, there's a lot that's not said. The idea here is that the second death has no, like, authority over them, so, one, that's the lake of fire, but two, that they would still be alive for like that thousand years. So, different perspectives on that, but, yep, yeah. And I mean, you know, and how many missionaries, how many, you know, just in every period, there are people who, and probably tons, millions, that we've never heard of. Like, this is not going to be a small number. I mean, in, you know, the, the Glorious Revolution, you know, in China, I mean, there was, there were millions of Christians at that time. When Japan decided to, its Western purge, there were millions of Christians in Japan at that time. So, yeah, I mean, feasibly, like, the, the Christians, the martyrs that would be resurrected, like, are not going to be Western. And I'm not saying that like, there won't be any, just saying that the vast majority, so, which is fascinating, it's, it's just amazing. For anybody that's read Philip Jenkins, right, The Lost History of Christianity, I mean, he details. I mean, just with the damage that Islam wreaked upon like the, like established Christianity, Christianity that had been around for like six centuries, and just boom, within a hundred-year period, gone.
To the point where they were forgotten?
Where they were forgotten, right.
We don't talk about them.
Right, right, we don't even talk about them anymore. And so, so, you know, it's just, there's so much. Once you start thinking about it, you're like, man, that's a substantial number. So, yeah.
What is your interpretation of what we're going to be dealing for a thousand years?
Yeah, and so, I think that, that ties in a little bit here with, so what's that ruling and reigning with, you know, I think, I think some will be, you know, serving, like, reporting directly. Okay, alright. Was basically, you know, what's that going to look like for a thousand years? But then, it also kind of led into, is this a, you know, physical resurrection, or is it just spiritual? So, so this is, this is me talking. This is not CCC. This is in no way represents, you know, what the church believes. We have very clear statement on, you know, the resurrection, on Jesus coming back, but in no way do we have anything that goes into the details and nuance of this. So, this is a minor. Alright, and this is just my perspective from what I've read, and if you disagree, great, good, we'll still be friends. So, I absolutely, 100%, like, the way I read this is that the resurrection is physical. Okay, so, in the same way that Jesus was resurrected, and He got to hang out with everybody for 40 days. Now, it seemed like there were some supernatural abilities that kind of get hinted at within the text. I think that's super cool, you know, where He's showing up in different places, where He's showing up behind locked doors. That's a cool trick, Jesus, right? Ow, I would love to see that too, like, be able to do that. You know, people are walking along, and He, you know, He's like right there on the shore. He's already got fish cooking over the fire and everything, like, I mean, that's pretty awesome. And, you know, and He's eating with them, and drinking with them, and, and teaching them, and being with them for 40 days. So, it's very, it's physical, but then there's also some like supernatural elements there, okay? So, I believe, as Paul says, that Jesus was the first fruit of the resurrection. That means that, like, basically, He's the first of our resurrection. That ours is going to be in the same way as what we That ours is going to be in the same way as what we saw in His resurrection. That being said, so I am 100% in the camp of this is a physical resurrection. Plus, you get some supernatural abilities there, hopefully. If not, it's not like I'll be disappointed. Hey, great to be here. So, um, so then the second part of that is what does that thousand-year period look like? So I can absolutely get, go with either view where all conflict is wrapped up in that moment, early, shortly after Jesus's return. I can also, um, so within the greater judgments, the wrath being poured out, the, like, all of that is the beginning of the remaking of the earth. And actually, it reminds me of the Tuhu Habohu, right? Where like everything, so in the very beginning, everything had become chaotic, chaos. But then that ushers in the creative force to, like God, to really bring order out of chaos. What we're entering into is that period of chaos for order to come out of it. Like, it's kind of, it's the circle. It's, you know, dare I say, the serpent eating the tail. That some of the ancients had kind of taken that idea because they've seen it. They've seen it. Whether there's a forest fire and you go through and all of a sudden, it's the healthiest trees that survived. And all of a sudden, like, everything's healthier within the next 10 years. And all the different strata, everything is healthier for that fire having gone through. Things being remade. But, you know, there's that destruction that happens first. And so when the Lord is bringing these judgments upon the earth, He's cleansing it. And allowing this opportunity for a rebuilding to take place. And that thousand years being part of that process with humanity. And I think that's where Ezekiel comes in too. I think he's seeing that. And I, and the question is, is he seeing what had the conflict at the beginning of the thousand years or the conflict at the end? Because I think there's, there's, there's persuasive arguments for both. But that period in between is for all of the martyrs to rule and reign with Jesus. It's part of that subjugation of the earth. To go forth and to bring it under the dominion, the immediate and present dominion of Messiah, of Jesus. So like I said, where there's just conflict at the beginning and all the rebellion is kind of wrapped up at that moment. And then all of a sudden, we have a thousand years of peace. Hanging out with Jesus for a thousand years? Or like, there's a mission. Which also kind of lends itself to like, why would these nations be deceived at the end of that thousand years? Oh, wait a second. It was some of that element that had survived. So anyways, just two different views. I'm sure both would make for great movie series, but everybody was thinking about it way too deeply. I had to throw in a joke there. And so and remember, remember, we have zero control over this. And so however this happens, right? And that actually, that reminds me of an old joke. You could be a mill, post-mill, pre-mill, but some are actually pan-mill. God's, God's in control and everything will pan out. But I didn't get a boo, so. David got up to turn that off. We're done tonight. Shut it down. So, so anyways, that is, you know, some of the views where like, that's how Zechariah, you know, 14 ties in, Zephaniah 14 and, you know, the different chapters where like, there's this continued paying homage to the Messiah, to the King in Zion. It's like, well, why would they have to keep doing? When is that going to happen? I don't think that's after the thousand years. That's got to be during the thousand years. And these are all the ones that survived that initial conflict with the Messiah and His holy ones. So there's a lot of things that, you know, within the Old Testament that I think like tie into that. And so it's a little bit of a different perspective than like really what I hear from a lot of different scholars. But then again, a lot of them aren't injecting. You would actually have to read more of a like, a book on eschatology specifically instead of, oh, a commentary on the old, on Revelation. Or just a commentary on Zechariah or Zephaniah or Ezekiel. You know, they'll, they'll present different options, but then how does that fit into the bigger field of eschatology? Does that make sense? And that's why I wanted, you know, throw in some of these charts and timelines and, you know, because even for what we're reading, like what we have in Revelation is so comprehensive because well, one, the same one giving the revelation also gave the revelation to all those in the Old Testament. But also at the same time, John is reading those revelations. He's got those in his mind. And so as he's writing these things, as so inspired, as he saw, as he heard, like, it's one of those things that we're like, oh, wait a second. Like, is he assuming the reader knows these things? And so just to be able to pull into that. So. Any questions? To that, on that? Everybody still thinking about it? And you know what? Like, remember living living a life in Jesus, serving Him, like just because your life wasn't taken from you in the name of Jesus, like, that doesn't make it less. Like, we still honor the Lord every single day. You know, how are we spending it? Are, is He our focus? Is He, you know, the one that we are worshiping with our lives? You know, even if you were to see this as second place. Oh, man. Hey, how'd that thousand years go? Wow, okay. Well, guess I got eternity with the Lord.
Yeah, you just want a place.
You just want a place. That's right. And He goes and prepares a place for you. So like, so just kind of keep that in mind and and all of this should inspire us to live differently today. To take care of those who we're not going to get anything in return for it. To absolutely live differently than everybody else. And to be in community and to challenge others to do that. Exactly like what Adam was talking about this morning. I mean, imagine as a Christian, you're going and reaching out to your neighbors this week. And they all happen to be Christian. This isn't shaming, but you know what I'm talking about. It's like, oh, man, my neighbor just came over and really blessed me and, you know, like, I should have done that sooner. Who can I in turn, you know, bless? That's the whole, you know, pay it forward or whatever. Well, really, that's just a reminder of like, hey, what's a good thing that you can do? And for us as believers, like, well, yeah, let's get in touch with those around us, immediately around us that we share fences with and how can we encourage them in the faith? We're finding community. It, it, it's really just, it's broadening our scope of community. Beyond just church, beyond the workplace. It's at home. It's right around us. And, you know, a hundred years ago, like, that was just like one of the first avenues outside of church was just like your immediate neighbors. Cause you relied on your neighbors. Now, we don't really do that. And so, so we get to have a sermon series on it. But to keep it in front of us and to be like, hey, oh yeah, I need to be intentional about doing this. Cause it's so easy not to. When Adam was talking about somebody that lives out in the country and, you know, I'm like, oh yeah, that's me. That's, uh, thanks. Thanks for the illustration there. So, cause I do, I mean, I know my neighbors, but I don't know the ones that, you know, are behind us or two doors down or, you know, whatever, two doors. That's like a country mile. So, but anyways, um, yeah. So boy, that was a rabbit trail upon a rabbit trail. Any questions? That's my transition back to the text. Okay, great. So, uh, but does that answer your question? Like, what are we going to do for the thousand years and the like spiritual versus physical resurrection? Wow. So, you know, and that's, that's what's missing, like, is that level of detail from the text. So, yeah, what survives? What we've already read throughout this book. So, no, that's, uh, you know, maybe it involves a little gardening, maybe it involves, you know. So that is, if you're one of those selected to be alive during that time. So blessed are those that participate in the first resurrection. Well, I, I, you know what? I think being a part of the first resurrection would probably provide a level of clarif, like really clarity for what the mission is. What your gifting really is. I mean, imagine finding out like something that, you know, was kind of just, just buried in this life. And that in the resurrection, like it's kind of revealed of like, no, this is how I wired you. And boom, it just all clicks. And you have the time to like really invest in that and to bless others and to like worship God with that. Like truly, like worship God with those gifts and talents. So, yeah, I mean, that's remember, like Adam was made to like tend to garden. So, you know, so gardening and stuff like that is not outside of the scope of, you know, calling.
I can do that.
I can do that. That's right. Yeah. And, um, so, you know, like it, yeah, I think there's so, you know, it's, it's a big, I don't know, but, you know, I think there's scripture to pull from with that. I don't think Cummins will survive though. I'll say that with like 90% certainty. Um, so maybe 99. I don't know. That's funny. Yeah, I would just be surprised if there was like, uh, well, one, that many people. Two, just the idea of like corporations and things, and even machinery. And what we think of. That's a whole nother thing. And so I'm sure the Lord has a plan for all of that. And I think there'll be a lot of empty homes too. So. Do we need to go back over the last 10 chapters? Sorry, that was a little dark. Okay, moving on. You know, you guys, you guys posed questions and I'm like, there's an answer to that. There's a possibility. Okay. Oh, boy. Uh, verse six. Blessed and holy is the one who has a part in the first resurrection. Over these, the second death has no power, but they will be priests of God and of Christ and will reign with Him for a thousand years. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I reread, um, oh, that was verse five, verse six. Yeah. All right. Sorry. I was already in the middle of that commentary. While the first resurrection is selective and the second absolutely universal, the first death is virtually universal. Some will be alive at the parousia, which is the return of Christ. And the second is selective. At Sinai.
What was that word? Parousia?
Uh, parousia. P-A-R-O-U-S-I-A. That's just the return. At Sinai, God promised the Israelites that if they would obey His voice and keep His commandments, they would be to Him a kingdom of priests. And a holy nation. Exodus 19:6. So I hope everybody understands that everything we're talking about at that moment, at this moment, is the fulfillment of Exodus 19:6. Like if you just kind of, even just for as far as we've gotten in 2 Samuel. Like, things didn't happen the way they could have been. That instead of a kingdom of priests, within the 12, the baker, baker's dozen tribes, 13, right? Cause you had two half tribes and a half tribe's a whole tribe. So that within that, the Levites had to be priests to the rest of the nation. And that was after the golden calf incident. That big mess up changed the trajectory of what God had planned for Israel. But time is on God's side, not ours. So God is still going to get His plan fulfilled. It may just happen 4,000 years later. That 19:6, Exodus 19:6 will be fulfilled. And that in that first resurrection, it will be a kingdom of priests. There's a lot to chew on there. So, okay, all right, all right. So from Matthew 5, 17 through 21, when we say the word fulfill. Right. It's a continuation. It's not like, oh, I fulfilled my vow and I'm done and over with it. Think of it, so the word in Greek literally means to bring the full meaning out of. In a continuous, like a present progressive continuing, continuing forever as long as like that is happening. And so I believe that with Jesus on the throne, it is a fulfillment of the Davidic covenant. Yep. And so all the references throughout Isaiah find their home in their fulfillment in Jesus on the throne throughout that thousand years. And into eternity. Because even in the new heaven and new earth, in the new Jerusalem that's coming down, who's on that throne? It's not like we forget about Jesus. It's not like Yahweh is forgetting about Jesus. He's still on the throne. So that, oh man, yeah. So, so when we go back and we're reading about David and we just think about like, oh man, like God's making promises on eternity. and we just think about like, oh man, like, God's making promises on eternity. So, it's just, wow, it's huge. Anybody else have any questions on that? So, so fulfillment of Exodus 19:6, "A kingdom of priests and a holy nation; the faithful by remaining true to Christ in the final trial by Antichrist are thus priests of God and Christ, as a royal priesthood," so also 1 Peter 2:5 and 2:9. They reign with Him for a thousand years. So we find that fulfillment then and beyond. Well, so depending on a certain, I mean, if you were to talk to Amil or, you know, Postmill or anybody else, we are priests. And really, like, according to Peter, we are that kingdom of priests now and have been for 2,000 years. And even that whole holy nation part of it, for me, like, that fits into that Israelology, that theological perspective on who is Israel. We are Israel, spiritual Israel. That is the holy nation. And so, what does a priest do? I think that's the fun part of like going through the Old Testament, where it's just like, oh, the priests are doing that? The priests are doing that? The priests are leading the military around Jericho? Whose plan was that? Oh yeah, some guy that appeared to Joshua when he was off by himself. Who, who had a sword. Take off your shoes for you're on holy ground. See, you know what I mean, like, so, so, like, all, all of a sudden, you know, if you want to read Jesus into that, that all of a sudden, He's already giving orders. The priests are to go first. The priests are to cross the Jordan River first. So all of those things. And so, you know, we see them serving, facilitating the worship of Yahweh. They're butchers. They're bringing, people are bringing animals to them, and they are processing that animal with utmost efficiency. They know all of the processes around the temple and sacrifices, the feast days. They know the scriptures. They know the laws to be able to pass judgment with the elders of the city. So, there's a lot that goes into being a priest. And how much can those be expanded upon in the age to come? Because there was not a prohibition on war or anything else like that. So, and some kept cattle and flocks and herds, right? Some kept, you know, grew grain around the cities and stuff, so gardens. Yeah, so, so I, it's much more diverse than, like, what we think of when we talk about priests, well, probably Catholicism. Like, that's not, look. Man, go back, read Leviticus, you know, Exodus through Deuteronomy. And then you can see that narrative playing out, not just in the book of Numbers, but throughout. I mean, you know, and like, there's great discernment there. I mean, I'm thinking of Phineas. When everybody else is rebelling against God, like, he sees this plague breaking out and he takes action. In a very violent manner, but all of a sudden the plague ceases. So like, I mean, there is a whole spectrum of things that the priests are called to do. So... Which is fascinating for, you know, just to read that and just see, like, oh wait, we're called to be priests, a holy nation. So, yeah. Any other questions to that? That's any follow-up? Alright, okay, so, uh, here we are, moving into verse seven. Seven through 10. So, this is progress, yeah. Just a reminder, only another two chapters left. I, I really am, I'm, I'm trying to get this done this semester, we'll see, we'll see what happens. Alright, reading seven through 10. "When the thousand years are completed, Satan will be released from his prison and will come out to deceive the nations which are in the four corners of the earth, Gog and Magog; to gather them together for the war, the number of them is like the sand of the seashore. And they came up on the broad plain of the earth and surrounded the camp of the saints and the beloved city, and fire came down from heaven and devoured them. And the devil who deceived them was thrown into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are also, and they will be tormented day and night forever and ever." So... Jackie, this is absolutely where I feel like that fits in, just perfectly. And I mean, which is, which is amazing, because if you think about, so, we're talking about Ezekiel 36 through 39. Imagine Ezekiel saw what was going to happen at the end of a thousand year reign of the Messiah. Like, that's just mind boggling, how much got skipped over in that process. So, uh, it's just, it's just neat to think about that, but then also the importance of this revelation and how it ties so much together. Because, I mean, think about it, Gog and Magog didn't have to be mentioned here. Just didn't. But we have an identifier harkening back to the prophets. So, yeah. Uh, 36 through 39, um, but that's a little bit broader. I mean, it's primarily 37, 38. 38 and 39, so, yeah, I'd just like to provide a little context there as you're getting into it. Yeah, right, right, right. So, uh, so what Mount has here, "These four verses portray the release of Satan for his thousand year, from his thousand year imprisonment, the gathering of the nations for a final assault on the people of God, the fire from heaven that devours the enemy, and the devil's final destiny in the lake of burning sulfur." Ezekiel had described an attack upon Israel in the last days, in which the aggressors would be completely defeated after a cataclysmic battle. Ezekiel 38, 39, "This eschatological warfare against Israel became one of the standard ideas in Jewish teaching about the last days." "We are told that fiery swords shall fall from heaven upon the undisciplined, empty-minded people who have surrounded Jerusalem. God is to judge with war..." So this is from the Sibylline Oracles, which was written around, just prior to John's time. And so this is their, like, understanding of how Ezekiel 38, 39 was gonna play, play out. So we're told that fiery swords shall fall from heaven upon the undisciplined, empty-minded people who have surrounded Jerusalem. "God is to judge with war and sword and with fire and cataclysms of rain." So, once again, that's all extra biblical stuff there. But that was in the Jewish mind of John's time. "It is worth noting that in Ezekiel in Revelation, the assault follows the period of the Messianic kingdom. In Ezekiel 36 through 37, Israel is restored to the land, then comes the warfare in chapters 38, 39. This is followed by a portrayal of the eternal state under the figure of a rebuilt temple in the new Jerusalem, chapters 40 through 48." So... Alright, so that's just kind of an overview. Getting into verse seven, "When the thousand years are completed, Satan will be released from his prison." So the release of Satan was anticipated in verse three. "Perhaps the most reasonable explanation for this rather unusual parole is to make plain that neither the designs of Satan nor the waywardness of the human heart will be altered by the mere passing of time." That doesn't make me feel better. "Perhaps the most reasonable explanation for this rather unusual parole is to make plain that neither the designs of Satan nor the waywardness of the human heart will be altered by the mere passing of time." So... We'll move on. Alright, "Once loose from prison, Satan picks up where he left off and people rally to his cause. So the Babylonian legend of Tiamat, the chaos monster, who is released at the end of time and once again defeated by Marduk, the god of light, is an interesting parallel but adds little to our understanding of the apocalypse. The verb translated or over carries the idea of bringing to an appointed end or goal." So, just a little bit from a Babylonian, uh, religion, theology. But Marduk features heavily within the Babylonian pantheon, um, and Tiamat, this god of chaos. So, it's just an interesting parallel, which for any of the Heizer fans, you're like, oh, wait a second. Okay, alright, picking up what you're laying down, so, um... Yeah, any questions on seven? Moving to eight? Alright, "And will come out to deceive the nations which are in the four corners of the earth, Gog and Magog; to gather them together for the war, the number of them is like the sand of the seashore. So both Satan and the false prophet are portrayed in Revelation as deceivers. It comes as no surprise that upon Satan's release from the abyss, he returns to his nefarious activity. It's probable that the second infinitive clause in verse eight builds upon the first, so rather than being a parallel, so that the verse says that Satan shall come forth to deceive the nations for the purpose of gathering them for battle." So he deceives them not just to like, for the fun of it, but he deceives them to bring them to battle. The question is... Who are the nations at this time? So, once again, personally, the way I read this is that not everybody dies through these judgments and the wrath and everything else, that there's plenty of people that are still alive. That there are also those who came alive for the first resurrection, those who were martyred, right? Who have come to life to rule and reign with the Lord. I would hope, I would pray, that it was just the remnants of the nations that had survived the judgments, that those would be the ones to be deceived. But... I would hope that those who were resurrected, those who were part of the first resurrection, would not be deceived. You would think that they wouldn't, you would hope that they wouldn't. But all we have is what the text says. So, if, for some reason, you are a part of the first resurrection, don't be deceived. Stick to Jesus. It's kind of weird that like, maybe into the millennial reign, somebody thinks about that. I don't know how much memory we have, like, previous life, but you know. So, yeah, Jackie. All the normal processes still apply. Yep, absolutely. So, so there would be a repopulation of the earth over a thousand years, which, I mean, think of population trends over the last thousand years. You know, there's point, it gets exponential. So, yep, absolutely. So, that's a possibility, too, is, you know, the offspring, you know, generations upon generations. So... Once again, nothing to be dogmatic about, but it's just potential, it's possibilities. So, because we are limited by what the text says. Anything that we take and extrapolate and, you know, project forward from that is, I mean, that's, it's just, you know, it's our logical, like, oh, you know, we're assuming that this is what happens, or this is why that happens. So, which you gotta always be careful with. I mean, plenty of people will make super persuasive arguments, because, you know, it sounds right. But always stick with the text, recognize where it leaves off and where assumption begins. So, and even for what the text is actually saying, that's where you kind of go backwards on it and be like, what, what do these words really mean? What's the context around these words? So... Okay, so verse eight here, uh, "Both Satan and the false prophet, uh, deceivers, da-da-da." "So the nations that fall prey to Satan's propaganda are said to be in the four corners of the earth. This vigorous speech is not intended to stress some ancient cosmology, but to emphasize universality." Just in case you thought the world was flat and square. "The nations are further identified as Gog and Magog; in Genesis 10:2, Magog is listed as one of the sons of Japheth." In Ezekiel 38, verse two, "Gog is the chief prince of Meschach and Tubal, who leads the invasion against Israel. Magog, according to Ezekiel 39:2, is a territory located in the far north." "In Revelation, however, both Gog and Magog are symbolic figures representing the nations of the world that band together for a final assault upon God and His people. No specific geographical designations are intended. They are simply hostile nations from all across the world," says Mounts. A little bit more on Gog and Magog. "Apart from the two fruitless references in the Sibylline Oracles, Gog and Magog are not mentioned in the apocalyptic and pseudographic literature. On the other hand, the war of Gog and Magog is a constituent part of the apocalyptic thinking of the rabbis. So it just regularly comes up, but not specifically. Thus the apocalypse is closer to the more scriptural apocalyptic of the rabbis than to the non-canonical writings." That's kind of interesting. "The assault itself may be modeled on the evasion of the Scythians into Asia in 630 B.C. Some authors hold that not only are the names Gog and Magog mythical, but the entire account should be interpreted as such. The myth of Gog, it is said, enshrines a deep insight into the resilience of evil. It is the mythical equivalent of the Pauline doctrine of justification by faith alone." So, so basically, that last part was not that Pauline doctrine of, you know, justification by faith alone was mythical, but just as ingrained that is, as that is in Christianity, in the, the psyche of the rabbis, that Gog and Magog and what they represent was so ingrained as a... was so ingrained as a part of their eschatology, just like the rapture or Jesus's second coming. We just, people are dogmatic about how that's gonna happen. Well, it was kind of just embedded in the mind of the rabbis. That Gog and Magog were going to, that was, that battle was going to take place. So while these insights are no doubt true and may well be illustrated in the Gog and Magog account, it would be questionable to reduce all events to non-historical truths of which they are an expression. The war itself should be distinguished uh, from that in 1714 and 1919 in that it follows the thousand year reign. So what Mount is separating here is what we read in 1714 and 1919 is like his initial confrontation with evil. Jesus comes back, confronts the beast and the false prophet. And this whole battle with the beast and the false prophet is not the same as the battle with Gog and Magog. Separating those two out, which that's why Gog and Magog are at the end of the thousand years. Once again, like as we're talking about this, it just fits a pre-millennial structure or timeline quite easily. Whereas if you were Postmill or Amil, like that's a lot harder to explain. Um, okay, we are gonna go ahead and just stop right there, we'll pick up at verse nine, uh, next week.